Process.
Thank you, Catherine. With that, I will call the hidden word and please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, to the fans, to the nation, and to this all, with liberty and justice for all. That way, can you confirm that notice of this meeting has been distributed as is appropriate to the requirements of South Carolina? Freedom of information, I have been satisfied.
They have.
Thank you for that. We will try to follow the agenda. And the first items on the agenda are minutes to be approved. First of those are the town council regular meeting minutes from the meeting, the town council meeting of August 22nd, 2023. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes as presented?
From the?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding those minutes? During none, all in favor of approval of the minutes of the August town council meeting of August 22nd, 2023, please signify your approval by saying aye. Aye. Do those minutes are approved unanimously, I believe. Next, we have the minutes from the town council work session of September 12th, 2023. May I have a motion for approval of those minutes as presented?
On my own.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning those minutes from the town council work session of September 12th, 2023? During none, all in favor of those minutes as presented, we signify your approval by saying aye. Aye. Again, I believe those minutes were approved unanimously. We have no presentations, and we do have public hearing items. First of those is ordinance 2023 day 08, and ordinance amending the zoning map with the town of Super Island so as to change the zoning designation for Charleston County tax map number 14906-00, day 016, containing approximately 2,700 plus or minus acres at 2125 Royal Pine Drive from the moderate single-family district to the conservation district. Is there any comment concerning ordinance 2023 day 08? Any comments? Any comments? Any comments? During none. Next, we have ordinance 2023 day 09, and ordinance amending the zoning map with the town of Super Island so as to change the zoning designation for Charleston County tax map number 147-06-00-062, containing approximately 2,700 plus or minus acres at 2156 Royal Pine Drive from the moderate single-family district to the conservation district. Do we have any comments concerning ordinance 2023 day 09? Any comments? Any comments? During none. Next, we have ordinance 2023 day 10, and ordinance relating to recovery of collection costs as part of delinquent debts collected until to the set off debt collection. Do we have any comments concerning ordinance 2023 day 10? Any comments? Hearing none. There being no comments in respect of any of the public hearing items, I will now close the public hearing. And I will ask whether we have any indication, whether the court has any indication of desire of citizens to make comments that were received prior to the meeting directed at items on the agenda to be acknowledged at this meeting.
We received none.
No one has indicated a desire to make comments during this period of the agenda, and therefore, it will close this portion of the agenda. That is, this portion of citizens' comments are now closed. Next up, we have reports of the town boards, commissions, and committees. And first, we have advisory committees, the community promotions, and engagement committee. And I will be giving the report for that committee. The community promotions and engagement committee did not meet in September, and the next scheduled meeting of the committee will be October 19th. As discussed at the August committee meeting, Representative of the Super Island Birders Group will be invited to attend the October 19th meeting to pursue requests for approval of expenditure of previously awarded grant funding for use for acquiring storage space for the birders group's supplies box. The other item that is the responsibility for the community relations and engagement committee is the SPOA long-range planning committee. That committee met September 12th. It was noted that the goal for the 2024 property owner survey is to have the survey presented to the long-range planning committee at the October committee meeting. The committee will be provided a so-called SWOT analysis, that is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the 2024 strategic plan at the October committee meeting. It was reported that a contact contract has been signed with the North American Land Trust to assist in design of upgrades for the lake house, including the meadow. The next meeting of SPOA's long-range planning committee is scheduled for October 10th. And that concludes the report from the town's community promotions and engagement committee. Next, we will call on Councilwoman Finkie to give her report for environment and wildlife.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee met on Thursday, September 14th. That's our regularly scheduled date. And our agenda, we kind of talked through all the things we've been working on this year and set a time schedule for how we'd like to finish out the year. A lot of focus on the whistler designation. To remind everybody, that's the Western Hemisphere Short Bird Reserve Network. It's really a big deal for the community of the whistler designation. We're ready to put in the application, but I think SPOA has some concerns that there are some conservation groups that would use it in some way to challenge moving this bit. They're already challenging the scraping, the sand scraping. So... We did not table it, but we are going to reach out to SPOA for more information. And if anybody's interested in knowing more about that, we have a special meeting on January 31st. And that video of that meeting and the presentation by Dr. Abby Sterling is on the website, that video. And it's really an accomplishment how we protected the short birds, especially the red knots, that we qualified for this designation. The designation for Devote Bank has already been turned into the organization, and so the next step hopefully is to move up the coast would be us and eventually Kila. So anyway, I encourage everybody to go look at that presentation from the 31st. Our next meeting of the committee is scheduled for October 12th. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions for Councilwoman Finkie? Jerry, did you say the next meeting is October 10th or 12th?
12.
12. Thank you. Very good. Next up, I'll call on Councilman Dan Court-Molesse to give a report to the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quick, our last meeting was held a week ago on Tuesday. Basically, we had a very productive meeting. And first of all, two things I want to discuss about that. We had a dialogue with SPOA's Safety and Security Committee, and just like to thank Mike Zankovich, who's here today, as he's the chairperson of the SPOA Safety and Security Committee. We've been chatting back and forth periodically, and he helped to arrange it. Unfortunately, as ARC on the same day, but he sent his able representatives to the meeting, and we had a very interesting and productive dialogue, and we will continue to do so. I guess the meeting is online already, right? Yeah. So if you want to see what the discussion was about, go to the town's website, and the meeting was posted, some of the things we talked about. One thing that's, if you remember, the previous month, we talked with the county sheriff's department. And one of the things we want to make sure is that everybody's in support of the county sheriffs providing more patrols of beyond the gate. So in our dialogue with the sheriff's department, they're willing to come in and patrol and so on. SPOA has been great about getting the barcodes on their cars so they don't have to wait in a line or wait for someone, push the magic button to raise the gate or whatever. They can come right in, just like anyone else who has this being there. So that's done. What we need to do is just iron out some items with regards to what the county sheriff can do on private roads. Things like speeding. We've talked a lot about seatbelt laws and things like that. They can do that because that's part of the informal traffic code of the state, but they're not going to, you know, be able to enforce SPOA rules. We need to iron that little bit out, and so we'll continue to have that discussion with the county sheriff and so on. The other thing I'd like to mention is, and we'll get more information about this out in the next few weeks, and that is 911 hangups. We got a set of data from the county sheriff's department that they share with us on, well, now quarterly basis, but we got June and July's data. And basically, what this information shows us is the nature of the calls to 911. And we've been looking at it, and we want to make sure as we let this information out that everybody understands the definitions of what the categories mean. But one thing I could tell you is this, that well over 50% of the 911 calls to the 911 dispatch center are mistakes. They're hangups. They're basically butt dials for the last rack of a better tiring. A lot of you might have the SOS symbol on your cell phone, and inadvertently call it. There are some phones that if you hold the button more than three seconds, it automatically calls 911. And most people would say, okay, so what's the big deal? We call 911. Well, yeah, we hang up, and that, but that's not the end of it. So that's, that's the end of it on our part. But on the county dispatch, the dispatcher then has to make a determination, okay, is this an emergency? Is it someone who has fallen, whatever? Do I need to dispatch medical emergencies? In other words, they can't respond or whatever. They then call the supervisor of our new district 11 and determine whether or not the county sheriff patrols should be, should go out. This happens to every 911 call, including the mistakes. So we want to make sure we have this process all down so that what we report to the citizens is accurate and exactly what happens, and ask them to just be a little bit more careful and understand that a wrong call to 911 means a lot of time on the other end for the county sheriffs, time that they can't be used, that can't be used to answer real emergencies or takes them away from that. So on that note, again, you can take a look at our last two meetings online on the video. This past week was with SPOA, the month before that with the county sheriffs, and you can get a better feel of all of this. And we'll put something together to inform everyone about the nature of missed calls to 911. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan about public safety in general, not just public safety meetings? I mean, he can respond to general public safety.
I just got a look this morning for a tropical storm for the leap and saw that it was petering out well before it gets here, so I was like, don't have to worry about that one, don't have to worry about the DRC getting him together for that. Just hopefully, it's the end of September and hurricane season. We get a whole more clock period to go through, and how come we don't get anything? So, but anyway.
Thank you, Dan. I think you're doing an excellent job of holding the tropical storms at bay, and I, for one, appreciate.
Well, yeah, it's one you don't see, that's the worst one, so by the way. So I figure if I'm on top of it, it'll keep me just worried enough to keep them away. So that being said, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'll call on Barry Goldstein to give the report for the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee did not have a meeting this month, but I'll provide you an update of our projects. The road design is complete. ESPR engineers have forwarded to the town a proposal to continue on and do the permitting. They have also submitted the permit to the town, which the town needs to sign so we can proceed. That's probably a three or three-month plus or minus process to get all the permits, but that is done. So Joe has all that, and we have also asked them to provide us a more reasonable update on the cost since it's been a year so that we, the town has that as well. As for the town annex and garage, the design is getting closer each day. We're still a little bit away from irrigation and low voltage lighting, but we have approached our neighbor, and Joe can address that, that the town hall property was donated by the adjacent property owner, Oliver Creep, and they have rights to review our design. Joe has sent it to them, and he's talking to them to make sure that they approve it, and that could take a little bit of time here to finalize that with them. Other than that, once we get that, we will continue on and try to get this thing packaged up and set up a bit. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions for Barry at all? Barry? Any, any guess as to where we will be getting permits in place?
For the road?
Yeah.
Hmm. The core of engineers, the one that kind of is iffy because they take their time. I would hope maybe first part of next year, February, March, we have all the permits in place, at which point then the town can decide. I mean, we still probably, it's in our best interest not to pave the road until after Seafields MUSC does all their stuff because there's no reason to pave it and then just tear it up. But it would be nice to have everything in place. The permits are good for, I don't know, a year or two, so it's not as if your permits went out, but it'd be nice to have everything packaged up, sitting here, ready to go, so the town has the option to do it when it chooses to do it.
All right. Any other questions for Barry?
I just have, after our workshop, I thought we were going to get, or you were going to try to get the site plan and the floor plans for the addition electronically. Did you send it, and I just missed it?
I don't know. We, we have them. There may be a couple minor tweaks as a result of our meeting with the mainland property owner, so I need to get with the architect to have a...
We could send them over. I mean...
Yeah, we could send what we have.
It just won't affect the structures or anything else. It just, it may affect the actual, the layout of the garage, it's adjusted to their property, and they prefer we move it, and we don't know how much of a move they want. So it won't affect what the buildings look like, that the architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, it just may affect slightly the site layout of that building itself. So he could board them along because, like I said, you wouldn't notice a 10-foot change in the building location of the garage.
I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just...
Just a question. What was the cost figure? You mentioned it, or you said Joe got the cost figure?
For what?
The roadway.
The roadway, our costs are probably two years of the date, so I've asked the engineers to provide us some updated costs so that the town's aware, because two years was, I think we did it even prior to COVID, so I don't think our costs are accurate, so.
All right, thank you.
It was over $2 million at that time?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was right around $2 million at that time, and we've added, besides the cost increase due to inflation and COVID, we've increased the drainage. So it, cleaning out all the drains that go off the road there, which is going to add some cost to it, so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Barry? None? Very good. Next, we have, what we have, the special committees, ad hoc committee. We still have an ad hoc committee, and I will invite Councilwoman Finkie to offer comments on the ad, of the ad hoc committee for short-term ordinance.
Joe's been working hard. We have our framework, and I think we will come to council at our workshop next month with our STR ordinance and hopefully parallel that with the nuisance noise ordinance so that councilor can be working on that in October, in November. And at that point in time, those things get posted to the agenda, and everybody will be able to see it. And that's the report. And so now, ad hoc committee on one.
Well, Jerry, actually, I don't think the ad hoc committee is responsible for the nuisance ordinance, but it's okay because I know you're deeply involved in, and so you're saying you may have the nuisance ordinance for the work session, the table work session.
Yeah. Joe can speak more to this. I mean, I, he gave me a draft that I have questions for him on, but that came out of our work on STRs. So it kind of evolved from that, that some of those things that were tucked in to the DSO because of the way we regulate STRs really needs to come out and apply to the whole, the whole town and all residents and not just rental properties. So it evolved from our work on STRs, and that's why we thought it would be, if we do a nuisance ordinance, we're moving some things out of the DSO that impact rentals, so we might as well do them together. Otherwise, we have a hole about regulations on STRs, so moving them together makes sense.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a comment, we did have a discussion with Safety and Security about both the nuisance ordinance and SPOA's rules and regulations. Take, for example, loud noise at a party. SPOA rules state, and Mike, you can paraphrase, if it's something like, if it creates a problem with the, you know, birds singing and the, you know, and all this kind of stuff, and you can't hear and all that, it's a problem. So, yeah, it's something that's very nebulous. That's the word I'm looking for. On the flip side, our nuisance also addresses loud noise and so on, but in speaking with Joe, who gave a explanation of it, there will be a decibel level at the property line. So if you call and, you know, you go to the property line and it's over X amount of decibels or whatever, then it's a violation of that. And so one of the things that we want to do with Safety and Security is take the new ordinance, the nuisance ordinance, and the SPOA's rules and regulations, and compare them and so on to make sure that we're not overstepping one another and that we're dealing with those rules. One of the things that we specifically talked about last week was if it's a rental having a loud, large party or whatever, or a property owner having a large party, it's a nuisance, it's loud, and it disturbs the peace. So it doesn't matter who it is, it's a problem. So that's what the, that's why I think Jerry was just mentioning taking it out of the DSO because a lot of fine may reflect short-term rentals and putting it in to the nuisance ordinance. So that's why they came like that.
And Joe started by listing what SPOA does on some of these nuisance things so that we were trying to parallel. Is that a fair comment, Jerry? You started from that point?
Yeah, I went through the entire list of P O A regulations, and so we basically pulled them word for word and have exactly what you said aside by side. So we have a comparison of what the P O A language is, what our draft nuisance language would be. So you can kind of go through point by point, topic by topic, and compare the two side by side.
And, and one reason to do this also is, you know, over and over for years, we hear, who do we call? It's confusing. We don't know who does what. And so if we have this, these parallel and ordinance and, and suppose rules and regs, whoever you call then is going to have kind of the same thing come in, whether it's our enforcement or SPOA's, we're enforcing the noise ordinance, like you said. So you don't have to say, oh gee, do I call the town or call the SPOA? So whatever, we would have enforcement for those things, assuming that somebody's on duty for us. But anyway, that will help solve part of that problem of who to call because we're trying to parallel.
All right, good. Thank you. Yes?
You have disposable boxes. And little meters of some type.
Yeah, and then train the enforcement guy to sign it.
Very good. Next up, we will have no report for the Board of Zoning Appeals, no report for the Plaid Commission, no report for the State Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, and for the Utility Commission. Ms. Annie on, Captain?
Yes, she is. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon. Annie, please give the report for the Utility Commission.
No, this is the report. Our last meeting was on September 20th, and our financial side, we remain within normal variation of our budget for the year. Our net income for the month of August was a surplus of $41,983. During the month, capital acquisitions were $167,389. And after adjusting for bonds, notes, principal payments, and capital, the current period showed a deficit of $115,451. On a year-to-date basis, our net income is $558,535 for the month ending August 31st. And after adjustments for capital purchases, debt, principal payments, there is a surplus of $313,483. Our available cash as of, let's see, July 31st is just a little under 3.4 million. On our water facility side, our effluent quality continued to meet permit requirements during the month. The daily average flow was .459 million gallons per day. Our maximum daily flow was .759 million gallons for the month. For water distribution, we delivered 29,947,038 gallons of water. For water distribution, uh, we delivered twenty-nine million nine hundred forty-seven thousand thirty-eight gallons of water for the month. Uh, that's to compare to thirty million three hundred forty thousand nine fifty-three gallons from last year. So, a little bit less. Our total effluent and deep water well pumped. Water pumped to Seabrook Island Golf Courses for irrigation was seven point two million gallons of effluent. And sixteen point six million gallons from our deep well. The total effluent and deep well pumped to Oak Point Golf Course was nine point four million gallons of effluent and zero. Uh, million gallons from the deep well. On old business, it, uh, we had last time, I reported we had two open positions, it looks as though. We may well have one filled, we're just waiting to find out, uh, they've got to complete out some of the um, background check. And as soon as that's completed and uh, it's appropriate. Uh, we will then be down just one operations position. And we did not have any particular development updates during the month. Under our new business, we did receive a formal proposal for an engineering uh, process study. Uh, that we requested from Woodward and Curran. We asked them basically to uh, go back and, and take a look at that proposal and give us a little bit more detail on it. And the other thing that we had requested was for Woodward and Curran to provide us a detailed timeline now of the potential. Um, to begin in the holding pond expend, extension, expansion project again. We have a budget meeting uh, for our next fiscal year, uh, planned for November the ninth. Uh, at nine AM, I will have that get that posted as appropriate. Um, we did a little bit of a preliminary look at our budget review and had a couple of questions and will. Obviously continue to work on that November ninth. And our next. Uh, scheduled meeting is October eighteenth at eight-thirty, that's a different time, it's eight-thirty instead of nine o'clock, so all of you who are. Wishing to join us, make sure you tune in at eight-thirty. And I will get that also posted on the website. And that's it.
Anyway, any questions for Annie? Any questions? Annie, I don't hear any questions, so thank you very much for your report. See you next time.
Yes, indeed.
Uh, next up, we have reports of town officers, first of those, report of the mayor, uh, I will give that report, uh. Comment concerning the mayor's recommended budget memorandum, the memorandum presenting the mayor's recommended budget does not reflect funding. That relates to a personnel matter that is a subject of the executive session of today's meeting. If appropriate, a revised memorandum will be issued. Uh, update for meeting with representatives of Sepola and the club, an informal discussion with representatives of the club in Sepola. On twenty September, it was noted by Sepola that they have contracted with North American Land Trust to assist Sepola. With upgrades of property at the lake house, particularly concerning improvements to the open space. Sepola is expecting a draft report on the condition of the seawall from the vicinity of Boardwalk six and seven to Dolphin Point. It is to the uh. In, in the area between Boardwalk six and seven, it was noted that the Coastal Conservation League and the S E Environmental Law Project. Have filed a petition with S C D H E C in opposition to a permit that was granted to Sepola. For sand relocation. Club has received club survey responses from sixty-three percent of its members. And noted a decline in activity at club amenities this summer. Sepola commented in that regard that they have, they, they have reported rental guest passes. For the Sepola access control gate were off twenty-nine percent, so I think, Joe, you have. Commented before that there seems to have been some reduction in. Um, or you can call it activity, but anyway, the, the primary activity of interest here. Is uh, the rental guests coming out here as well as other visitors and so. Uh, that is uh, at least supported by the numbers coming from the club and Sepola. Uh, update for the Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update for twenty twenty-four. Is now available online from Charleston County, the county's advisory committee. Responsible for preparation of the update encourages all participating jurisdictions. To adopt the updated plan without delay, the town's resolution for adoption of the updated plan is on today's council agenda. Reminder, the October meeting of Community Promotions and Engagement Committee is noted. The next meeting of the Community Promotions and Engagement Committee is scheduled for October nineteenth. Reminder for the October names, the very long range planning committee. As noted, the next meeting Sepola's long-range planning committee is scheduled for October tenth. Um, those two activities being. A responsibility of the town's Community Promotions and Engagement Committee. And with that, I have reached the end of my report as mayor. And we can now proceed with the town administrator's report.
Passed around um, some updated beach patrol activity reports, while those are. Going down the line, a quick update, last time they told you we're getting ready to start work on our front door replacement. As of this morning, we now have a brand new front door, so that work is uh, completed, finished it this morning. Um, just gonna be coming in, I think it was afternoon or tomorrow morning to touch up some of the paint around where they had to um. Uh, clear out uh, for the door frame, but um, happy to report that project is finally completed. Um, and a couple items on the agenda, um, just for information, um, first, wanted to. Give you a quick update on where we stood um, through, I guess you can go down to the second page, um, the. Uh, year-to-date through beach patrol, um, I know historically, we've usually given you monthly updates, but we seem to have had a lot of. Other stuff going on uh, this year, all of the monthly reports are available uh, on our website, but I did just wanna talk about beach patrol. Uh, briefly this afternoon. Um, where we are um, so far to date, again, this is through August thirty-first. Um, we've had um, a total of fifteen beach boat violations. Two beach fire violations, twenty-four uh, critical habitat violations. Um, thirty-nine doom violations, one fishing, thirty-five glass, six. Um, animal harassment, um, a hundred and seventy-one leash violations. Um, ten other, that could be a long list of things from anywhere else in the code. Uh, we've had five, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, five. They put on shuttle, I think that's failure to fill in a hole, um. No storage, leaving things on the beach overnight, twenty um, swimming and wading. Uh, that's in the area near Captain Sam uh, inlet, uh, either around low tide or when dolphins are present. Um, six vehicle violations. Um, as is the case, um, every year, the majority of these items, they're able to uh, handle through um. Uh, speaking with the individual, uh, and offering a verbal warning, um. If they have instances, if it's an egregious violation, repeat offender, you know, if they ask them to do something, they go by an hour later or something and. Uh, you know, they have glass back out on the beach or something, uh, they may give a written warning. Um, the third level of escalation um, is an ordinance summons, um, through the end of August. Uh, we've had three hundred and twenty-five verbal warnings, nine written, um, we have zero ordinance summonses. Uh, but I know we have had at least one uh, issued in September for a beach vessel. Um, so that's where we stand on the uh, code enforcement side, uh, the uh, total. From, and this is from April first through August. Um, they also perform a variety of um, other safety-related services while on the beach. Um, so year-to-date, April through August, um, they've had twelve um, rescued persons. Um, particularly swim assist, uh, somebody gets caught out in the current or something, will go out and help bring them back um, to the shore. Um, five boat rescue, one major medical call. Eight minor medical, eighteen jellyfish things, seven stingray. Remissing persons, thirty-eight prevention, sixty-seven um, public assists, which could be anything from. Ask, stopping them, asking them a question or something, uh, and sixty-one um, wildlife, that could be injured wildlife, dead wildlife. Uh, things of that nature, so the other types of um, service calls and interactions, a total of um, two hundred and twenty. Um, so as a reminder, our beach patrol season runs through September thirtieth, so we have. Uh, today and then a couple more days, and then our beach patrol season uh, will end um. As of the thirtieth, so thirtieth will be the last day. Um, we remind folks, if you have an issue, a safety-related issue, you're on the beach during the off-season. Um, if it's a safety hazard, something like that, please call uh, nine-one-one. Uh, if it's a code-related uh, enforcement issue, um, we do have our code enforcement officers um. Uh, here at Town Hall who can respond um, either by phone, or we also have our uh, online code enforcement portal available. To report violations as well, so uh, as, as we do every year, um, the beach patrol season corresponds to our. Uh, off-leash requirement season, um, so that also begins on October first. Uh, so from the area between Boardwalk one and just a little past Boardwalk nine up to the. Uh, boundary between Pelican Watch and Captain Sam's, um, that's our um. Our area where people, starting October first through March thirty-first, um, dogs are allowed off-leash anytime, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, in that area. Reminder in front of Camp St. Christopher, uh, dogs do have to be on leash at all times. And from Boardwalk number one up to Captain Sam's inlet, uh, all pets are prohibited uh, at all times. Of course, it'd be here, so uh, those rules will go back to our off-season rules uh, as of October thirty-first.
Joe, just one thing about the, obviously you look at the numbers and leash violations or however you want them. Are by far the biggest violations that they cite from the beach patrol. Um. Is, let me see if I got. If we go into, let's say, going down Boardwalk one and we go to the left where we're not supposed to be, is that a leash, leash violation? If you take your dog there, or is it the leash violation, just, I don't have my dog on a leash, where are they supposed to be on a leash? I'm just trying to, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what the, it's pretty well marked.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they call that a critical habitat violation or if that's lumped with the.
I just wondered, you know, I mean, if it's simply, you know, uh. Like you said, a hundred and seventy-one leash violations from up until July, that's people just. Not having their pets on a leash, that's quite a few, I think.
Uh, it is, um, historically, the glass violations are always our number one. Um, the leash rule violations are second, um, this year, for some reason, we've had comparatively. Uh, very few glass violations, uh, and we do see the leash uh, rising to number one.
I think they're getting boxes of wine now instead of bottles of wine, I think that's the difference.
Yeah. Um, so no, but I'm, I'm pretty sure, if I'm wrong, I'll shoot you an email.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
I'm pretty sure the, the restricted area is covered in the uh, critical habitat.
Okay.
Uh, violations, uh, but I'll, I'll double check on that.
And, and depending on our high tides and, and our king tides, some of those buoys like float around, so when you're saying it's marked really well. Not always, I mean, some of those signs end up wherever and have to be replaced, so.
Yeah, we, we did lose a couple, um, so I think we had them all replaced.
Oh, that's right, you were picking up.
Yeah, there, there may be one more, Robert was having a hard time finding the. The anchor and the chain, because it was buried in the sand, but uh, we actually got a metal detector that she used, let me go out and. Um, find the, um, find the chain, so um, the cost of the medical, metal detector was about the same as. Buying a new anchor and, and new chain, so we just did that, uh, so there might be still one to be replaced, but uh. We've gotten all the other ones that were missing or damaged from the, you know, the store armor over the course of the season, those have all uh, been replaced.
Thank you.
Um, quick update on the uh, budget, we do uh, have the uh, draft budget substantially complete. We'll get that to you um, before the um, end of this week, I'm just doing a couple little tweaks on the formatting. Um, just for presentation of the um, fund balance, just the budget itself is, is completed. Uh, we're just doing a, a couple of the formatting tweaks, um, mayor has reviewed it, as he mentioned in his report, he has um. Prepared a memorandum, memorandum, which will be submitted to you, uh, along with the copy of the um, recommended budget. Uh, we also, as the mayor said, that's one uh, item uh, for discussion executive session today. Uh, just wanted to get some personnel matter feedback from council uh, on that before we. Uh, finalize and send, uh, send off the um, the draft budget, so um, you, you will have that before the end of the week, this week.
Joe, remind us when our next really exciting afternoon's met in a budget workshop is, please?
October thirteenth.
Well, we'll give you an option, I don't know which is more exciting, if you wanna come when the painters touch it up or on the wall like that. You can come watch that paint dry, or you can tune into uh, one of our budget workshops, but the first one is the thirteenth. Um, and I believe that's one, one p.m. Uh, so we have the thirteen, October thirteenth, the second one will be the twentieth, and the third one will be the um, twenty-sixth. So typically, we do, we try to get through all the general fund at the first meeting, um, if we have a little bit of carryover, we. Start that at the second meeting, uh, we do our restricted funds, the uh, three different accommodations, taxes and, and all those. Uh, at the second meeting, and then we do our um, our designated funds, so those are the. Uh, capital projects type funds, the emergency fund, the town facilities fund, vehicle replacement and all those, uh, so that's. Um, we'll, we'll follow that same schedule um, this year, so we'll start with the general fund uh, on the thirteenth. Um, and then uh, it was also discussed by Jerry and Dan, uh, we have been. Um, putting the finishing touches on the draft nuisance ordinance, uh, we have um, four sections in that ordinance. Um, one dealing with parking, uh, one dealing with trash, uh, and as Jerry says, some of that language is being taken from. The DSO and put into the, the regular town code, um. Um, so most of that language we already have on the books, but there's some tweaks and expanding a couple sections there. Um, the third one deals with property maintenance, so minimum maintenance standards for property and structures in the town. Uh, and then the fourth one um, will be um, for noise, uh, noise issues and noise violations. Uh, so like Jerry said, we do expect to have that um, ready for your review at the um. Uh, the workshop in October and. Our intention of moving that forward for first reading consideration uh, at your October meeting. Uh, that completes my report.
Thank you, Joe, any questions for the town administrator? Any questions? My students, no, very none. Very well, uh, we will now have report of the system, town administrator. Catherine, please give your report.
I do not have the August financials from our accountant. Um, he is currently working out, um, out some kinks and some issues that we had in the financial report, and I should have that in September.
Is he healthy again?
He is.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Catherine, very well.
Yes.
Catherine, on, on looking at the July, um, financial statements, and, uh, looking at the, the general fund number, um, how much of the, I guess the fund, the general fund is unrestricted, there's a figure there, four billion dollars, four point six million dollars is unrestricted, how much, what portion of that four point six is unrestricted?
On September? Are you looking at just the revenues?
I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, I'm looking at the balance sheet, and looking at the listing of liabilities in that assets. And on there it shows forth the end, and this is the report from July thirty-first. Uh, and it shows a figure, the general, the general fund is eight billion dollars, but then the general fund, uh, of which four point six is in the general fund, I understand the designation, but I'm questioning it. Of all the, of all the fund balances, how much of that is cash that's unrestricted?
So he separates out the restricted fund balances, those are the state accommodations tax, county accommodations tax, town accommodations tax, um, we have court, I think that's the, um, victim, the, the stuff that has to go to the state, the alcohol tax is restricted, um, the short-term rental permit is kind of quasi-restricted, um. And so all of those are the ones that are restricted by some sort of external, um, factor, typically state statute. So those were four, I can't remember. Four, seven, seven.
I'm looking at page one of the balance sheet.
Hmm. Yeah, that's a big one on the bottom, um, so those are the ones that are, um, restricted. Um, basically, everything else, um, is in unrestricted fund, um, so, I don't know. I don't know, I have to add them up, but town, council has set up several, um, we call them designated funds, so there's no external restriction. Uh, so for example, on there, in our emergency fund, right now, we have like two point, that's one of the things he's updating in the current one, he wasn't showing the transfers on there, I think it's two point two million dollars in our emergency. And that's money that council has set aside, it's not restricted, there's no external restriction that we have to have. Right, so council has voted to designate that, um, as part of our unrestricted revenue. So technically, it is unrestricted, but it is designated, so we have that. Um, we have the, um, road and drainage, we have the town facilities, the vehicle replacement, those are all designated funds, so all those plus the, um, and, and what we had noticed when we got the July financials, he was showing the general fund, he did not include the budget amendment stuff that was approved by council a couple of months ago, where some of that general fund was designated for, um, capital projects and the town facilities fund. Uh, so that's why, that's, that's why it's late, he's making that correction.
That number, that number is going to come down. The four, the four billion is going to come down, it's shown there.
Correct, designated but not restricted. So if you take all of those designated funds, um, and then you add what's shown as the general fund fund balance, those are basically all unrestricted.
I understand that, I'm talking, I'm totally talking about the four billion bucks, because the four billion bucks appears to need to be unrestricted after. That's correct, the four point six million bucks appearing on page one is four point is unrestricted after, either restricted by, uh, the board or restricted by some external authorities. That, that's correct, and that number is going to come down a little bit because of something that he forgot to do in this report.
Uh, as far, we call that the unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, the unassigned, so, so this report says four point six.
So I think around one point one, give or take, I, I don't have the number right in front of me, but once he makes the transfers on paper and shows them as designated, um, it'll, it's. It's, it's one point one plus the net, uh, what we brought in minus what we spent this year, I, I don't have that exact number right in front of me, um. But it should be around there, or it should be higher than here, it should be somewhere around there. Um, we do have a, uh, fund balance policy that council's adopted, um, which stipulates that our, um, the, the town's unassigned, so that's the not designated, not restricted, um, should be a minimum of fifty percent of our current year's operating budget and a maximum of a hundred percent. Um, GFMA, which is the government, uh, finance officer, is a supervision, um, they recommend, um, sixteen point per month percent, which is two months, because we're in a disaster prone area. Uh, our council has set it at six months, up to a maximum of twelve months, when that number exceeds twelve months of the current year's operating, that's when they take it and designate it out to those designated funds for capital projects.
But this, this is what I understand, the four point six is going to be minus by one point somewhat million dollars, to bring it down into free range, or it's going to be at the one point three after all, or anything in that.
One.
That ballpark, that ballpark, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out what that number, four point six consists of. I don't know if I can figure it out.
So it, it consists of items that have been designated, but have not been updated in the financials to show them being designated. Plus our unassigned fund balance.
Good, so that will get cleaned up in the next financial report.
Yes, that's what I'm looking to do, and he's, he's correcting that today.
Very good, any other questions for Joe? There are none? Uh, next up, the, uh, what we're going to have in the town, the town, the report of the zoning administrator, chief code enforcement officer. Tyler, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Greg, uh, the code enforcement summary of our activities since the last, uh, August town council meeting. Um, we had thirty-two, uh, business license infractions of, uh, individuals working without a town business license. A stop work order was issued in each of those cases, and for two of them, we did issue an ordinance summons, as it was the second time that those, uh, individuals or that company had been caught working without, uh, town business license, um. We had ten cases of folks working without a town, uh, zoning permit or Charleston County building permit. Um, for short-term rental violations, we had, uh, nine trash can violations where trash cans were left out, uh, past the allocated time, in each of those cases, the twenty-four hour emergency contact was called, the issue was resolved in a timely manner. We, uh, also had one case of a vehicle parked in a landscape or a grass area, same as the, um, others, where the twenty-four hour emergency contact was called and the issue was resolved in a timely manner. Um, for the beach, we did have, uh, one case of a beach or anchored vessel where a verbal, uh, warning was issued and the vessel was moved. Uh, another case, or three cases of dog off from leash, uh, where early warning was, uh, given and the issue was resolved, uh, additionally, we had forty-nine, uh, business license decal warnings that were given out. Um, and we did have a fairly busy, uh, court, uh, docket for September, we had twelve total cases. Um, one involved a beach or, uh, anchored vessel, um, that individual was found guilty. Uh, five were renting without a short-term rental permit, uh, all of which were found guilty. Uh, three were renting without a town business license, all of which were found guilty. Um, I believe the reason that those numbers don't add up there is that for two of those cases, they had gotten uh, a summons for the rental permit and the business license, and it had dropped the business license case for two of those. Um, and they came in and paid their fees and got everything resolved, uh, in advance of court. Um, we had two, uh, two separate, um, ordinance summons issued for, uh, a case where a, uh, short-term rental, uh, manager did not provide access for an emergency inspection. Uh, both of those were found guilty, and then we had, uh, one case of a short-term rental that had L S B parked in a landscape area, um, that was a repeat offender and was finally, I'm sorry, that the, uh, vehicle was not moved in the, uh, time allocated to do so, so a summons was issued in that case as well. Um, the above guilty verdicts did result in two properties, uh, two short-term rental properties meeting or exceeding the three-strike threshold for suspension of their permit. Um, once the period to appeal the verdict, um, has passed, which I believe should be the end of this week, we are going to proceed with, um, suspending those licenses for a period of two months, three, she goes. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Tyler concerning all of the activity? There are none, there it is, thank you. Uh, let's see. The next report will be for the communications and events manager, I'll call on Robin Chola to give that report.
Good afternoon, um, good afternoon, everyone, so just to recap real quick, uh, the summer event uh, schedule has been pretty successful, um, we ended with the last Chou Town on, on the twenty-third of September, um, and from, from feedback from those who attended and the vendors, they really enjoy either providing their services or the town supervisor, and those who attended really enjoyed the fact that this is being, um, conducted on a semi-regular basis, um, moving forward, the, for the remainder of the year, some, um, some items that I'm working on, uh, coming forward as a holiday schedule or a holiday event that, uh, we're looking at hosting on the seventh of December, which is the first Thursday in December, uh, so detail could be emerging on that. A couple other items that I'm working on are a annual event calendar and a strategic planning calendar that I'm going to, um, propose in the, uh, next community engagements and events meeting, as well as bring up to council when it is ready to go. Uh, next item is I'm working on a communications survey that's going to go out to the residents, once it's reviewed and approved, I will have it sent out into guidelines, so everyone can go and, uh, hopefully participate in that survey, this will help me better know where everyone is receiving their information. And, um, next item is working on a monthly newsletter proposal, so we'll be working out a, a template for that and bringing it up with, uh, Joe and the big quarter on, you know, what, what that's going to look like, and once we get a good framework together, um, bring that up to one of the, the next meetings. And then finally, we're working, um, the communication plan for the town hall, as well as the emergency preparedness and the what outlets for the digital version that's out. So those, uh, items should bring me out to the end of the year with the planning offices for, um, for communications. And that is all I have.
Do you want to mention about the public safety fair?
Uh, yes, um, sorry, I almost, almost forgot.
Oh, yeah.
We're looking at dates for, um, the public safety fair, which is going to bring out, um, the Charleston County Sheriff's Office, the fire department, maybe Red Cross and some of the other emergency preparedness organizations, kind of something similar, but not as extensive as the disaster awareness day event. Uh, we'll have, it's going to be kid-friendly, we like to have it so that children can probably maybe get, you know, their fingerprints done by the, by, by the police station and learn about little safety tips and, and techniques, uh, that can be done. And I'm planning to have it along with a couple food trucks, maybe, and, and have it kind of like a safety fair here in town hall. Um, and we're looking at the springtime for that.
Well, one of the dates that we looked at was, uh, annual weekend. The annual meeting weekends.
Yes, February.
Yeah, the middle of February, um. That's, and see if we can do that, so after the annual meeting, a lot of property owners are here for that, uh, for the club and Sapoa, and, uh, after that, we bring in here, as we said, food trucks and all different types of things, so it would be something, yeah, the problem with February is you really you know, you have great weather in January and you also have some nasty weather, so, but that's right now on the horizon of what we're planning. And we'll, uh, keep everyone informed about that. Thanks. And you won't forget, you know, get that out.
That's great. Also be part of the, uh, event calendar and strategic calendar that we go over. It might only be an evergreen kind of document that gets updated regularly and up for the annuals to be reported.
Very good, thank you, Robin, any questions for Robin? Any questions, no questions? Very good. Uh, next up, uh, we have ordinances for second reading. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten and ordinance relating to the recovery of collection costs as part of delinquent debts collected pursuant to the Set Off Debt Collection Act. May I have the motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten at second reading?
Some move.
The second, please.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten? There are none, all in favor of approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Joe, I think ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten is approved unanimously. Next up, ordinances for first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. And ordinance amending the zoning map for the town of Super Island, so as to change the zoning designation for Charleston County Tax Act number one four nine dash zero six dash zero zero dash zero one six, containing approximately twenty-seven hundred plus or minus acres at twenty-one twenty-five Royal Pine Drive from the moderate single-family district to the conservation district. In other words, the property of twenty-one twenty-five Royal Pine Drive is to be converted to conservation, so may I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three day zero eight at first reading?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-three day zero eight?
Just for a point of clarification, what we just had, the public hearing round is the same piece of property, one's just moving it off of our zoning. The first, that was the public hearing part. And then this part is changing it for the tax map, is that correct, or like?
Well, the, the public hearing is one step in the process of adopting the ordinance, so
Right.
before you adopt the ordinance, you have to have a public hearing. Um, so it's the same ordinance, uh, but when it was on earlier in the agenda, it was if anyone had any comments on that rezoning matter, um, we didn't have any, so now it's before council to, um, to approve, I guess we're first reading of that ordinance, um, and it's a rezoning ordinance, um, it's a, um, uh, green space property, I believe, POA, and, um, so you're just changing the zoning designation from, um, single-family residential to conservation.
This seems a little bothered to go, and they have to have a as an ordinance for every one of them, okay?
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Very good. And, uh, with that.
I didn't mean to confuse you.
Uh, it's, it's, it's good, and easily confused, don't worry. Um, so all in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-three day zero eight? Please signify your approval for first reading by standing aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-three day zero eight is approved at first reading. Ordinance twenty twenty-three day zero nine, we're going to amending zoning map of the town of Super Island, so as to change zoning designation for Charleston County Tax Act number one four seven day zero six day zero zero day zero six two, containing approximately twenty-seven hundred plus or minus acres. containing approximately twenty-seven hundred plus or minus acres at twenty-one fifty-six Royal Pine Drive from moderate single family district to the conservation district. They have a motion for approval at first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three days zero nine.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-three days zero nine? During none, all in favor of approval, ordinance twenty twenty-three days zero nine, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is approved at first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three days zero nine is approved at first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven. And ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of not to exceed five million, five hundred thousand general obligation bonds series twenty twenty-three or such other appropriate series designation of the town of Seabrook Island, South Carolina, or one or more notes issued in anticipation thereof to pay the cost of repairs, replacements, and debris removal rising from major or catastrophic storm or vent or natural disaster and the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, fixing the form and details of the bond, authorizing the mayor administrator to or either of them acting alone to prescribe certain details relating to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond and the disposition of the proceeds thereof and other matters relating there too. This ordinance replaces the previous bond maintenance for the same purposes and increases the amount of bonding authority from four million, five hundred thousand dollars to five million, five hundred thousand dollars in keeping with increased costs associated with disaster recovery. Uh, may I have a motion for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one one?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one one? During none, all in favor of approval, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one one, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one one is approved unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if we go on.
Hmm.
Not that I'm not easily confused. I'll I'll admit that's the first thing. So we just, and going back to my other question before, ordinance twenty twenty-three zero eight, ordinances for first reading. They're down to one minutes for our work session the other day. And our agenda is, okay, so that was from September twelfth. And in the minutes, it states that uh. Okay, ordinance is worse up for second reading. On page eleven of our agenda.
That was an error, I mean.
Uh, see, I'm not going very soon.
No, so I can update those minutes to know and reflect it on here that there was an error, I mean, that I put that in the wrong place.
I'm sorry. I didn't. I should have. I'm just saying. I was reading this and then looking at. Got it now.
Got to catch down. I didn't catch that.
It's it's okay. All screwed now.
I'm fine.
Okay, good. Very good.
Could be a common public period of on this on this matter. Um, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I can't hear the question.
Period on this matter before act before acting.
On what matter?
On the ordinance of the long, the vet bond debt. There's gonna be a vote.
Yes, there will be a public hearing.
This is this is this is first reading.
If that's what I'm trying to get to see, when when the public, when the public comment is, you know.
At the next council meeting.
That's a good question. If you ask my question, thank you.
Okay. Uh, other action items, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, a resolution to authorize the Municipal Association of South Carolina to act as claimant agency for the collection of debt on behalf of the town of Seabrook Island in accordance with the Set Off Debt Collection Collection Act. They have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine as presented.
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine? There are none, all in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine is approved unanimously. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, a resolution of the town of Seabrook Island adopting the amended twenty twenty-three to twenty-four Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation and Program for Public Information Plan. I call for a motion for approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty. And as a matter of fact, I will myself make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, since I tend to be the representative to the Charleston Regional Hazard Mitigation and Program for Public Information Plan Advisory Committee. May I have a second? Very good. All in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty is approved. Last up, we have an agreement with the Municipal Association of South Carolina to act as claimant agency in accordance with the Set Off Debt Collection Act. The agreement has been provided to members for their consideration. May I have a motion for approval of that agreement?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion concerning that agreement? There are none, all in favor of the agreement with the Municipal Association of South Carolina act as claimant agency in accordance with the Set Off Debt Collection Act, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
The agreement, Joe, is approved by council. Not surprisingly. Okay. By us for a discussion, there are none. Uh, citizens' comments, anyone participating in the video conference and wishing to comment concerning town matters other than personnel matters may do so by clicking the raise hand button under the participants banner. Anyone participating in the telephone conference wishing to comment concerning town matters other than personnel matters may do so by pressing star nine to raise your hand. Each speaker is asked to raise their hand and speak only once. Every round will be made to call on all speakers in order they have raised their hands. When called on to speak, please make sure your audio is unmuted. If we call on you and you not hear anything, we will ask you to unmute yourself. If we still cannot hear you, we will move on to the next speaker. Begin your comments by stating your name and address for the record. All speakers will have up to three minutes during which to provide their comments. Each speaker will be informed when there are thirty seconds remaining. Once allotted time expires, the speaker's audio will again be muted. Catherine, do we have any raised hands?
No, sir.
No raised hands? Anyone in the audience with a couple of comments, please identify themselves. Please indicate your desire to make a comment. None? Very well. With that, I will then ask that council enter executive session. They have a motion to move to executive session for discussion of a personnel matter.
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify your approval and move into executive session by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now going into executive session. Will be excused while council is in executive session.
Let me finish this one as soon as I see it.
We are back live.
Thank you, Cameron. Council will now consider, I believe, the counsel's voting.
We need to come out and take a second.
Oh, I thought we just didn't. Okay. Did we not vote to come out of executive session? In that case, let's vote all in favor of coming out of the assembly. Please signify your approval to do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And now, the executive session. Do we now have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we immediately increase a just upward salary for Judge O'Neill, our municipal judge. He has not had a pay increase since 2000 when he was first appointed and with an inflation adjustment, his salary should now be $650 per month.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions, comments, or discussion of the motion to increase his salary as judge to $650 a month? You're in on all in favor. Please signify your approval to increase the judge's salary of $650 a month by saying aye.
Aye.
That is approved. And with that, any other council comments? Very none. May I have a motion for adjourned?
So moved.
All in care of adjourned, please signify for approval by seconding the motion to adjourn.
Seconding.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Good.